Yes, we're missing Councilor Hart.
Oh.
And Councilor Vasquez.
He told me to not put a VPN up.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our city council study session for today. The, what is the date today? The twenty? Twenty-third. Good grief. How did we get there so quick? Twenty-third of September two thousand and twenty-four. For the record, all members of council are here with the exception of Councilor Hart and Councilor Vasquez. I did receive a text from Councilor Vasquez that she is on her way. Um, I'm assuming Councilor Hart will be here. I haven't heard otherwise, but if it's all right with council, we'll give them a few minutes to arrive. You see no objection. We will do that. And then Chief Laidman has also been detained by official police work, so he will be a little late as well, so. All right. First item on our study session agenda, discussion items here, title seven, ambulance fees, amending resolution two zero two four dash four four. Effective date, approve a resolution, amending resolution two zero two four dash four four, exhibit A, section seven, ambulance fees to be effective September one, two thousand and twenty-four, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is issued amend the ambulance fees. I can tell you that Chief Hobrick and our new deputy city manager Debbie Zabel has been put to quite a bit of work. They've been, every time I pass their office, they've been working on this really, really hard, so. I hope to get this codified beginning this month. I know there was a bit of a hiccup where it should have been done, I think, what, three months ago? But I'll let them explain sort of some of the mechanics of that and where we are with it. But with that, I'll throw it to Chief first to kind of tee it up and bring in our deputy city manager.
Actually, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, if.
He's a smart man. He's a smart man. I was thinking I should have gone that way first, you know, ladies first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So one of the first things or the first people to show up on my doorstep last week was the fire chief. With this, hey, we adopted these fees back in May to take effect June first. And he had found out from our third-party biller that the fees were not forwarded on to the billing agency. So therefore, the new fees had not been implemented and the ambulance charges were not billed accurately or appropriately as council had approved their fee resolution. So we, Chief spent some time with the third-party biller and learned that in order to rectify this, we would have to, they would, we would have to direct them to refund everyone that has already paid. And then we would still have to wait for those who hadn't paid to pay to get them refunded. That would all come at a cost to us, and then they would rebuild everyone with the new rate. And what's not included in here is the billing charges that we pay to do that. So to rebuild them would be probably five thousand dollars, give or take, you know, fifty dollars. And then they would charge us also to do the refunding. The big unknown is our primary recipients of the invoices is Medicare Medicaid. I don't even know how that would look to send refunds to Medicare Medicaid, how that would impact their system, and then to send them a new bill. So the option that I believe is the best for everyone is to amend the resolution so that the fees are effective September first. And we'll just live with the fees that we collected for June, July, and August. And then when they do their billing for September, they'll have the new rates going forward. And do you have anything to add for that?
No, that pretty much covers it and just kind of providing some backstory on it. We, the process of getting prepared to filing for a new legislation that came through regarding no surprise billing. And so this is, it's through GASSO, which is Ground Ambulance Service Organization, which is an affiliate, if you will, of OIC or the Office of the Insurance Commission. So going through and going through this process and getting everything ready was kind of where we came to terms that when I was working on the third-party billing, I said, well, these are your rates. And I thought, uh, they shouldn't be. And that's how we got to this point.
All right. Questions for either the chief or deputy manager? Yes, sir. Mr. Beeler.
How do we receive these funds? Is this the ones that we pay with our city bill with sewer and water?
Well, these are the ones that are billed directly to the insurance and or Medicare Medicaid, whoever the primary payer is. So this is separate from the ambulance utility. It is collected through property taxes. Are your property taxes?
It's utility. So this is strictly for transport fees.
Thank you.
Further questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Who was responsible for getting that information to our third party and what are we doing to make sure it doesn't happen again?
So the finance department is responsible to make sure that the fee resolution is distributed to all the folks that need to receive that. And that's one of the things that we had talked about with the city manager and the city clerk is, you know, when we do our Tuesday morning meeting is, you know, we just passed an ordinance, we passed a resolution, it has fees, it has a contract, we need to make sure you're it. You need to get this out. So following through on the day after the council meeting to find out who's going to be taking care of this is.
Okay.
We'll help that.
Thank you.
And for the record, Councilor Hart has arrived. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you for catching that. Wish that had been caught sooner, but it's been a chaotic half a year. So I think that we will find other things that may have slipped through the cracks as well. But it's, I'm glad we caught it. I do agree with the idea of making your billing date effective September one. Doing the refunds and then rebuilding and all that sort of stuff seems to me like a paperwork nightmare. And as mentioned, I don't know how you would refund Medicare, Medicaid, then rebuild them. And I don't know what their audits would find for something like that. So in order to keep it clean and simple, we'll do it this way. But yeah, absolutely. Thank you for finding that and coming up with a solution. Item B is the Salgado Annexation, adopt an ordinance, annexing parcel number two, three, one, zero, one, nine, dash, two, three, four, zero, four, and adjacent rights of way to the city of Sunnyside in the Salgado Annexation. Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, to give some context for the group and the public. On February twelfth of this year, the city of Sunnyside approved a resolution to move forward with the process of a proposed annexation for the property of twelve seventy Washout Road, which includes a public hearing to forward the application onto the Akama County Boundary Review Board. Prior to adopting the final ordinance, HLA is here, Joseph Calhoun is here to lend some more context. A public hearing was held with the City of Sunnyside Planning Commission on March twelfth of this year. And during that meeting, the planning commission determined that the property should be brought into the city as high-density residential, commonly referred to as R three. A notice of intention was submitted to the BRB for review. Uh, no findings were made during the forty-five-day review period, so I don't want to steal too much thunder from Joseph. He gave a really good summary report, but here he is in case you guys have any questions.
Good evening, Council. Joseph Calhoun, HLA Engineering and Land Surveying, as the city manager articulated. We're at the last stage of the process here for this annexation, approving or rather finalizing this ordinance would be the last step, uh, the last action that needs to be taken at the council level. After the ordinance becomes effective, there's some paperwork that gets filled out and sent to the Office of Financial Management to finalize things at the state level, but otherwise this would be the last step. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Calhoun? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
More of a concern, um, when it first came up to council, my concern was they want to bring it inside a residential, but it's, it looks more like a business out there. I mean, I guess if they want to make it a business, I have no problem, but at least let's bring it in as a business, not a residential. So I, I mean, I'm kind of concerned on that.
The, uh, the property is, um, so while, while in the county now, it has a future land use designation of urban residential. And so based on the city's comprehensive plan, it would have to come in as a residentially zoned property. Otherwise, an additional comp plan amendment would be required to change that to a different classification.
But do we know if they're going to be running that business out of there?
I do not know.
If they are, it would seem as if they would be not in compliance with zoning.
Right.
And so that we would be able to take steps.
Yes, they could apply for a comprehensive plan and then reason in the future if they wish to keep a business or coming in as R three. There would be the potential to do residential development as well. It is just shy of five acres, so there's a lot of potential for that property.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Hart.
Um, this has already gone through the planning commission and they've already looked at all the zoning.
Correct.
So then I don't see what the issue is about whether it's a business or whether it's a high-density residential.
The recommendation of the planning commission is for it to be zoned R three upon annexation. I wasn't at that meeting, so I can't speak for, you know, what was discussed at that time. But that is the typical process that Sunnyside takes for annexations is that the planning commission would make a recommendation on the specific zone upon annexation. And in this case, it would stand to reason that it was based upon the current county designation of urban residential.
But can I just follow up?
You may. I don't see anybody else's hands up.
A follow-up with that with, um, sorry, I had to follow up with that. It had to do with the fact that currently it's in the county and they want to annex into the city.
Yes.
And, and it, and so for, bring it on.
So in order to annex, property has to be adjacent to city limits and within the urban growth area, which this is both, the, um, the urban growth area is the dark red line on that map that you see there. And the city limits is the blue line. And so this is the, the first parcel north of the school there on Washout. Potentially additional properties directly north could petition to annex in the future. But properties on the east side of Washout Road are not within the urban growth area, so they couldn't annex unless the urban growth area was changed. And again, uh, the future land use component is something that both the cities and the county do in their comprehensive plan. And so in this case, the county takes a more broad approach when they designate future land use designations. So they have urban residential, urban commercial, et cetera. In this case, urban residential is the county plan designation, uh, which would, upon annexation, would become residential in the city's comprehensive plan. And again, recommended to be R three multifamily residential zoning by the planning commission.
Thank you.
Further questions? As I recall during the presentation back in, when was that, March? That they did intend to make that residential, but it's deputy mayor's question is, is a good one. And so is there a risk of that, say, getting grandfathered in as an existing business if that's what they're running there? And then being able to have a business running in a, in an R three high-density residential area, is that a potential thing that could happen?
Well, generally speaking, when a property is annexed, the, the use that is, that it comes in as is effectively grandfathered in, as you mentioned. It is residentially zoned now while in the county, so it's kind of continuing that, uh, that type of use on a residential property now.
Okay, just curious about that because, you know, sometimes, you know, we, we have people running businesses in residential areas all over the city. And some of them are, you know, very quietly placed within a home. You don't know there's a business going on. And then there's others that are not so quiet. They're very obviously running a business out of their home. And sometimes the neighbors are upset by that. And I just kind of want to make sure that we're going to have some sort of power to, like, say, this is high-density residential. We don't want businesses coming in here. We don't want to be running a mechanic shop or an auto body shop or something like that that can have an impact on a residential area.
Right.
So, all right. That's Mr. Austin.
Just out of curiosity, because this is just a learning, um, opportunity, uh, if you will. What happens like if we get to that point and, and, you know, like, not saying that this is going to be the case for this, but generally speaking, if it would get to the point where we find that there's, that they're starting to run a business, what would be the course of action?
I think the first thing we would go to code enforcement. Would that be correct? I believe so. Corey, do you want to chime in?
Yeah, we just start out with our notice process on it. Give them due process to go through and then probably eventually land with Ben.
Thank you.
Further questions? There are none. Thank you very much. Item C, amending SMC two dot zero three dot zero one zero, operating hours. Adopt an ordinance approving the amended business hours for the community center and municipal court. Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is something we've been talking about inside City Hall to adjust some of the hours, like you mentioned, at the community center and Law and Justice Center. Uh, the community center currently operates from ten to four, the official hours, so extend those hours uh, from eight thirty AM to twelve PM, um, up to five PM. Uh, so Raul Sanchez is here to talk about it. Also, Mary Ramirez, Parks and Recreation Supervisor, and Samantha Orohood, uh, the recreation coordinator who work out there, uh, can answer any questions for the body if they have any. You know, it's, I know Chief's a little late because he, he's at a call. Um, so he can, he can talk to that, about that a little bit when he's here in regular session, but, um, that's how I'll tee it up for you and have Raul Sanchez start the dialogue.
And before you start, sure, just for the record, Councilor Vasquez has arrived, so.
Thank you, as the manager, uh, mayor and council. So yes, the, the hours at the center would be from ten to four for transactional business. So now, um, by changing the, uh, amending the, uh, the, the ordinance, we would be from eight thirty to five to kind of just with every, with City Hall and every, every other, um, um, office that we have, so it would work under the same hours. Um, it used to be ten to four, I believe, also because we only had one staff member there. And in order to do other things that were part of the community center and having the center and do business there at the front, it was ten to four. But now that we have, um, we're staffed better, uh, I like to change the hours from eight thirty to five so that the center is open. And then, of course, with the extended hours for, um, other things that may be going on at the center, depending on what we have going. Um, other than that, I have, uh, the rec, uh, staff here to also go over any questions that you may have um, as far as with rec at the center.
Council members, any questions? Mr. Beeler.
I'm a little concerned about being shut down from twelve to one. We can't stagger people's lunch to keep the business open during that time or?
We can. We can. We can try to shift things around. Um, the reason is because that's what we have right now for City Hall and for some of the other offices.
Do you actually lock up City Hall for the hour?
Oh, City Hall is, oh, okay. Twelve to one.
Right, that's the development. But City Hall.
Okay. So no, we can, I can, yeah, I can work on staggering. Yeah, I would just read, the way I was reading it, it was closed from twelve to one.
Okay, Ms. Hart, you got a question?
Yes, about weekend, um, activities is a question that came up, some conversation I had recently. Do we not have someone from the Parks and Rec staff there on Saturdays? Should like a big event like, say, Easter or Halloween or something like that that's held on the weekends? Do we normally have somebody from the Parks and Rec there to help, uh, this, you know, open up? Make sure things are running properly, all that sort of thing. Is that?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll have the staff kind of comment on that because that's something they're doing now, so, yeah, they can speak on that.
There is, uh, Recreation Supervisor. Um, so yeah, so on the events that we plan, the bigger community events, we do have, um, at the time, we had two staffs, so they would help out on the weekends. And then we would get volunteers from the schools and, uh, the Sunnyside Court to help out with any of those. Um, now that there's three, there will be more help to help with those events. If even one of us is unable to, uh, be there and attend, at least we'll have two staff members on the weekends that we put on the bigger events like Easter, um, the father-daughter dances, Halloween events, um, anything like that.
So can I follow up with that real quick?
I thought I saw another hand up down the line, too, if they wanted to. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Hart.
Well, the other, the other thought I had on that was, like you said, those are just the events that the city sponsors.
Right.
So any event that sponsored by, say, somebody else, um, is there a staff member available?
There is no staff members. Those are just rentable, um, events that the, the public does.
So we don't have anybody there to oversee the property?
We do not at this time.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
How do we, I guess, how do we determine to change the hours from, it was ten AM? How do we change it from eight thirty AM till five PM when the youth is at school at that time? When I, back then, when, when, when we unfroze the positions, I thought the intention was to stay open a little bit longer, more like seven PM. I guess now with, with three people there, I would have, I would have imagined it a little bit differently. Somebody there till seven PM. Um, right now, you know, high school gets out at, what, two fifteen? The grade school gets out at three fifteen. They really only have two hours, two hours per day to go to the community center. Um, I mean, we gave you guys forty-hour position and in return, the community only gets, you know, what? Another hour.
Well, we've been talking with WCIA and in regards to like underage. And it is, um, we are to have two staff members there at all times, um, for underage. So if Lisa was to come in like at eight and work her shift till five, if we stay open till seven, then that would leave her by herself.
For underage.
For underage.
Under age of eighteen?
Under the age of eighteen.
So, and for clarity on my end, the five o'clock is for business that has to do with money. If there, it was a rental or something, that's why up there it says that extended hours for seasonally, as in things that you may be referring to that are be taking place after five. The center's going to be open. It's just things that have to do with, they take things in for a rental or something, it would be till five o'clock. And then after that, because of, depending on also staffing and having to be available for, um, youth under the age of fifteen, then they're not doing business in the front for rental things. Um, that would be up to, up to the point of five o'clock, then whatever's going on at the center after that. But there's a point where it just closes as far as handling rental business side of it. They can still be there informing the public as far as the rentals and everything, but not taking in. Um, because right now I believe that's how they take in the, uh, payments.
Ms. Ross, though.
Um, yeah, so just a question from Councilor Hart about the, the, the weekends. Um, it's just something that I was thinking about as well, um, my new conversation where we've been, um, amongst ourselves on the board. Um, I know some board members' concerns is, uh, being open on weekends for our community. And how do we make sure we manage and create hours of operation to best suit our community? I would have loved to see this, and maybe Mr. City Manager, you can chime in on this. I, I would have loved to see maybe a plan, including weekends, because right now we're only seeing hours of operation Monday through Friday. But what is it going to look like for our weekends? And I think that's a plan that we definitely have to consider. Um, and I just don't understand why we haven't already, um, included this, um, in, in this amendment. Um, and I would actually, going back to your point, Deputy Mayor, would like to see maybe a more solidified, thought-out plan of now that we have three staff. Um, how is that going to look like in the future for hours of operation to be just expanded even through the weekends? Um, and I know, Mary, we've talked about volunteers and, you know, doing a program and outreach for volunteers, which is, you know, volunteers are crucial um, and critical to, to extend the hours and, and also for our programming. So, um, that's just my concern is, um, I would have loved to see maybe a breakdown of how the weekends would also look like in this, um, in this proposal.
So some of the recommendations from WCIA would be that in order to have youth under, uh, a certain age, you need to have two staff members there to oversee. So if we opened it up for the weekends, all weekend, then during the week somewhere, they're going to have their days off. So then we, at the center at that point, then you wouldn't be able to do something on the center during the week while that staff is also off. So then we have to look at all that. We also have to look at the hours of what they're, the union contract is, considers a work week. So for some, that may be, um, something we can do, but we have to look at those two because there's, there's also two different unions involved with, with that. Actually, there's three different bargaining groups, but two different unions when we're considering staff. So then we, we, we'd have to look at that. The way I was viewing it is was Monday through Friday. And with the staff that we have now, in order to accommodate the hours, would be shifting them to four tens so that we could have longer there hours without causing an excessive amount of overtime and also considering their days off. That's how I was viewing it. If we move into the weekend, those are the things that we have to look at, though, is even if both of them are there on the weekend in order to meet the requirements of WCIA, then somewhere in the middle of the week or somewhere, they're going to have to be off somewhere. And then it puts us back to one, one staff member there if they're both off or they're staggered to where they're off different days in the middle of the week so that they're working the weekend.
Hey, Ms. Ross.
Follow up. Thank you. Uh, so I, I remember reading through, um, the supervisor's job description um, back maybe sometime in January, February, when I requested it by, um, um, from our former city manager. And, um, and I don't remember the coordinator's job description thoroughly, so remind me. Um, I remember, so, you know, developing job descriptions, I've done it along the way. I know there's, there's, uh, there's language that we incorporate into that, like, um, uh, you know, we'll be working X amount of hours or X amount of days. Some of that includes weekends. I know for a fact that I believe the supervisor's job description has that written in. So would that, um, would, would that, um, I guess, call to, to come back to the union and, and talk about how we are going to write in weekends if it's already been written into the job description and the expectations of the role?
So the way I see it now, also, I guess, trying to answer your question is, they do that now by, like, what Mary was talking about, the weekends with the Easter and things like that where they come in on the weekends, depending on what the event is, on depending as needed. But, um, if we have a contract already, depending what the language is, those are the things that we, we try to make sure we follow. And as, as we're kind of thinking about changing the hours and staffing properly, also because of liability reasons with that, WCA has also, um, required what we should do and not do. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Okay, so I, I do have a question. So the, for insurance services, we need to have two staff members there. It's not like we can have a chaperone, like, if it's a group that's organizing this event or this, yeah, let's call it an event for now. We can't have, say, a chaperone leader from that group in place and that doesn't meet the insurance requirements. We have to have two actual staff members on site?
If it's going to be something that we're putting on, like, uh, some thing that involves youth, then if that, if it's our program, we, we do have to staff it. If it was something else, as long as there's somebody that, um, is an adult and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, like, I mean, when you guys talk to insurance, uh, that's the way I believe is that you need to have, I mean, it may even be volunteers.
Yeah, and we can get volunteers to help out. Um, we just need to do the background check to help out as well.
Okay, so that was going to be my next question is can we use volunteers to help fill in those gaps a little bit? Because I don't want to overwork our staff either. I know you guys put hours in.
Yeah, so if we get those volunteers to help out even on the weekends, then we can fill that. But a staff member, if you're doing it on the weekends, would have to be, it would be a requirement for them to be there if it's.
Sorry, Mr. Manager, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, no problem, Mayor. Thank you very much. One thing, um, Councilwoman Frost, I, I sent you and Deputy Mayor the open space plan. So I was just made aware of that today by, um, Raul Sanchez and, uh, began reading that. So, so that's sort of a comprehensive park plan that has been done, but this conversation. But this conversation, uh, Deputy City Manager and I have been having for a couple of days, just trying to sort of unravel things and, and seeing how we get the best bang for our buck out at the community center. Cause I can tell you in the, in the community, I am hearing, you know, that, that people want it open longer. Cause it, it doesn't seem practical to have it open from ten to four. And then everybody's either at work or at school. So, and those are conversations I've had with Mary and Raul and, and we're, we're looking at it. So we actually were thinking to pull this agenda item. But I thought the discussion was germane and we should have it in public and, and certainly, um, you know, Mary should be here as well as Samantha, just to have the opportunity to answer questions. So, you know, and I've been conversating with both and, and they are working to try to program it more effectively, but you know, in my opinion, I do think it should be open on the weekends. I don't, you, you know, that's at least on Saturdays, maybe not Sundays. So that's something we're working on, but there are some nuances with the union, but we're certainly working on trying to figure out the, the best way that the community can utilize it. Um, but that's something, uh, and I'll, what I'll do is I'll send that document out to all council members so you have it. But I do think that we do need to probably update that for new council members and, and, and look at it a little bit closer. But certainly the hours are something that's been the talk of the community recently.
Ms. Hart.
One of the questions I have, you know, I understand, um, I think my whole, I, what, I think a lot of us thought what we were doing was not so much, uh, opening it up earlier in the day, but having it open longer in the day. So, you know, operating like you're at City Hall is, is not exactly what I thought we were doing. Um, I actually believed that we would be, you know, being open at ten o'clock if you had during little kids programs during the day or women's programs or uh, you know, what does that do for like men's basketball or if they're still playing pickleball, people?
We do have, um, open gym pickleball in the mornings. Um, they do it from eight AM to ten, eight AM to ten AM, and then they pick a day also in, on Fridays. Um, we also have open gym, uh, for basketball and that's from six to nine.
Okay, so is somebody from the staff there for those?
No, we have a volunteer who opens those gyms, but they're eighteen and older. And so they are, um, only allowed to have anyone eighteen and older to be there.
I guess my, my concern is, is I would really prefer to have somebody staffed there. Just because of the legalities of, of the use of the building, because we had in the past, we've had um, just destructions of property and things like that, because we didn't have somebody there actually watching. Uh, that's my only concern is.
The last two years that I've been, you know, we haven't had any issues with the open gym people.
No, I, I wouldn't assume so, or, or the pickleball people either.
Yeah, no.
But it just seems to me that rather than being open, you know, I, but I understand for the pickleball, I suppose that makes perfect sense. But it just seemed to me that we were supposed to be going longer in the evening. So after school, parents wanna maybe go play basketball with their kids, that sort of thing. Did somebody from staff is there? I mean, I understand trying to use volunteers for it, but we, we run through those pretty quickly. I don't know, just, I just wanna think about that.
It, it sounds to me like, yeah, this is still a work in progress. And manager suggested that maybe we pull that from the agenda for the regular session. Is there any objection to that, Council? We can always bring this back in a month or a couple of weeks or whenever it's ready.
No objection here.
Okay, so we'll take that off of the regular agenda for tonight and allow staff to work on that.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you for that, for the work that you have done and the work that you will be doing. All right, next item on this agenda, item D, extreme weather shelter. I don't know if, uh, Council recall, recalls, last winter, um, we had a cold weather situation where, um, well, the city had never taken steps on this before. And I spoke with the manager at the time. Um, I had heard, seen the weather report and happened to be driving through town and saw someone pushing a shopping cart through town. And it occurred to me that maybe we should take some steps to prevent people from freezing to death on our streets. And I understand that the city is not a, uh, social organization, social agency, but yet at the same time, I think it behooves us to be compassionate to those who, uh, do not have a warm place to live. And so I asked the manager if we could get to work and come up with some place for them. Now, we had less than twelve hours to get that all prepared. And so we quickly, uh, took over the community center, which was not the most popular choice in the world. And afterwards, we kind of had a rundown of how that went. We were thinking of different places. A lot of these things could be alleviated if we start a little bit early. So I would like us to start having a conversation about that. Where we could open up places for people, whether we can get organizations to volunteer, churches to volunteer, or we can use, um, city-owned properties such as a senior center or something else that would allow for people to come in out of the cold. Um, I was surprised at the number of people who are accustomed to living in the street who chose to stay there. But is also surprised at the people who live in, uh, some sort of a building, but yet didn't have heat and they came in with their family and tried to stay warm. And to me, it is important that we provide something for these individuals. Um, again, having people freezing to death in our streets is not a great idea. Um, I know we did spend a little money on overtime for staff time. And that's another thing that we can look at is volunteers willing to come in and help out in those situations. I'm sure there are people in the community who would be willing to help out in those sorts, in those types of situations. Um, also, I know we got donations from Walmart, we got donations from Domino's Pizza, we got donations from other organizations. I'm not sure, I didn't, I don't remember the full report on it afterwards, but, um, those resources are there. And so I'd like us to start having a conversation about that. I don't know, Manager, if you've had some opportunity to think about that over the weekend, but.
The, the one thing I was thinking of, you hit the nail on the head, was could we utilize the senior center? And, um, what staff would, would actually staff that? You know, how would we go about procuring volunteers and then sort of putting my city manager hat on, talking with Ben and, and you know, what is the liability when, when unsheltered individuals come into our domain? And then we are responsible for their safety, you know, at, what is the threshold of culpability if, if someone was to get into a fight and, you know, things happen of that nature? Would, would we be to blame because we brought them in, you know, with best intentions? Right, because my other concern was you, you go out and rent a facility with the best intentions and then you don't get a whole lot of folks that, that wind up going there and, and we spend a lot of money with the best intentions and it doesn't get utilized and so it's, it's, uh, I've learned in government, no good deed goes unpunished sometimes. You spend five, ten grand and, and with, with the best intentions to help people, then no one comes and then people criticize you on the other side of it. So, um, I, go ahead, Deputy City Manager.
Also, there's also the point of, is it, uh, a shelter where people are spending the night? Which does then create some occupancy issues, fire life safety issues that have to be addressed. And then we also have to take a look at, is this a low barrier shelter or is this a no barrier shelter? When it comes to drugs and alcohol. And then is there going to be someone there to police that and someone to take the drugs from them? And then we're holding drugs or we're not allowing drugs. And it, you know, there's, there's a lot that goes into that. And if there's, you know, users that are coming in, some, some shelters, you cannot be high. Some, you could still be high and come in, which is a low barrier shelter. And it would be the concern of mixing a low barrier shelter with families. So that's, that's some of the liability stuff that we would really have to look at.
Which is why I want to talk about that now in September as opposed to.
Facility itself does have to have some requirements as far as, you know, the occupancy and so on and so forth, so.
Yes, and we can get, I think, some information from, from other agencies as well. Mr. Butler.
I know there's some churches in the area that people go to that need help and they give them a coupon for one of the hotels for the night. And maybe that's a better thing to do, is just have something available.
Okay, and I'm, you know, this, this isn't something that's, that's need driven, other than, you know, I had the idea last year. I just want to make sure that we do have something available for people who, who are in need of that. I just, you know, the thought of somebody freezing to death out in our streets just is not constable to me. I, I can't, you know, I, I can't imagine that being allowable. If we can find a way, and maybe even the city is able to offer, I don't know what, again, our liability is. If we can say, here's a voucher for a hotel room for the night. You know, something like that, that's fine.
The, the state does offer a voucher system for emergency shelter in this particular situation for local hotels. And that started during the pandemic and has continued. That, that didn't go away when they wrote the rest of the laws. That is available for the city to utilize and it's a state program to do that. Um, anytime you utilize city property to shelter people, you incur the liability, which is the issue for that. The other thing that City of Olympia, for instance, tangled with a whole bunch was not only the drug and alcohol use, it was also the criminal record and propensity for, you know, people with, with sex offender status being given shelter in areas. And then how do you determine that prior to coming in for zero barrier shelters as opposed to partial and then full barrier? And so i- if, if you can utilize a voucher program like that for local hotels, it's a much easier way to get around having to figure out how to reduce liability for a city-owned property.
Okay, Ms. Hart.
I was just thinking, you know, in terms of, I, I know we, we, last year, we, the, uh, extreme weather shelter was put together really quickly. And, um, I'm not, I'm trying to remember how many people we actually served, but I don't see anybody here who was actually working on that. So.
Mary might have an idea.
Mary, do you?
Do you have an idea how many people we served last year with the cold weather?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
Was it, oh, excuse me, was it overnight? And there was food as well.
They, yes, they did stay overnight and, um, there was donations for food. Um, I know Lisa was one of them who stayed over all those, uh, nights and, uh, helped prepare all that as well.
Okay.
And they even gave them little, um, uh, baggies with, uh, toiletries and everything else.
Mm-hmm, and blankets.
And blankets and, uh, clothing.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Deputy Mayor.
So going back to the voucher program, you said it's a state-run program?
The, the state-run, uh, voucher program that was started during the pandemic for people who had temporary displacement or were shelterable as individuals. Um, but it extends to emergency situations, such as weather events, um, like this. So I, I would have to find out who you contacted in the state to get ahold of that, but they're available for people that are in need during weather events. And Debbie's able to actually know more about that.
So there are, there are homeless funds that are awarded from the state. And the, the county is the recipient, except for City of Yakima. The county is the recipient of all those funds. And so the county does have the responsibility for providing, um, sheltering for, for the homeless. Now, any city can request to have their homeless shelter funds sent to, to the city to utilize. But the city would have to, at a minimum, adopt the same plan that the county has. Now, the county's homeless plan is they're a granting agency. They don't, they don't provide any services. They hold RFPs where homeless, you know, shelter providers will submit an application and then the county will award them grant funding. So, you know, at a minimum, if we were to receive our own homeless funds from the state, we would have to adopt a plan like that. And then we would become the granting agency. But the problem that, that county has been having is there are very few agencies who want to run a homeless shelter. And so, and they're very expensive. I mean, when Camp Hope ran theirs in Toponish, it was fifty thousand dollars a month. Um, that was for all their staff, their outreach staff. Um, you, you, you know, you can rely on, on donations and contributions, but when, you know, once word gets out that there's a shelter, more people will come, there's more people to feed and provide, you know, adequate bedding and, and blankets and so on and so forth. So it is, it is a big undertaking.
Okay, and that's, you know, and that's the purpose of this being on tonight's agenda is that we can start talking about ideas, what's the best way to move forward. Um, like I said, last year's was just kind of spur of the moment and I don't want that to be the case this year. I want us to be planning ahead. If there's better ways of doing it, like a voucher or something like that, I'm a hundred percent in favor of that. I just, again, want to get vulnerable people off the street. Or people who are, don't have heaters in their home, you know, they're relying on one space heater to heat a home or whatever. I think that we, if we can, we should, you know, render some sort of assistance. If those funds are available through the state to be able to do a voucher for a hotel, we can do that. I don't have a problem. Ms. Hart.
I was just thinking, um, when I was working as the executive director of the Crisis Center, um, over here at Lighthouse, uh, one of the things is we, before domestic violence situations, we had hotel vouchers. Um, also, at the time, the police department received, um, and I think the, um, neighborhood church also received some, some vouchers, some housing vouchers. And we were able to use, utilize those for people who are homeless, which is different than a domestic violence situation, of course, because those are two different pockets of money. Um, but the police department was able to, um, utilize those for some housing. But there are not very many hotels in sunny sides that'll actually accept those vouchers. Because again, with the different kinds of, uh, requirements about being in high, all that different sort of thing, criminal records and so forth. But it's a place to start looking. I really believe that, um. Maybe there's a church organization out there or, or some other organization out there similar to Rod's House. Maybe they might be interested in taking on this thing, but we won't know unless we ask. I think they were instrumental last year.
Rod's House was extremely helpful.
Very helpful last year.
Uh, just to put, we actually had our Yakima County Chief speaking this last weekend and we had representatives from the Red Cross that came in and participated in our meeting. And just kind of putting this out there as, as a suggestion or something to look into. I know the Red Cross has, um, added to their staffing a little bit. They're trying to expand their services. And while we did not talk about this particular issue or concern, it might be an avenue worth looking into as well. I'm not sure if, uh, Ms. Able, if you've had any, um, interactions with Red Cross in this regard, but it'd be.
Ms. Rostow.
Mr. May, thank you. Um, yes, uh, actually I had, that was, um, I think in conversation earlier this year, um, I was speaking to someone and I think they said, why don't y'all collaborate with the Red Cross? Rod's House was very instrumental in, in, in helping us this year, but it also cost us some money, right, with Rod's House? Um, now being in, you know, the financial crisis that we are in and, you know, going back to this cost benefit and analysis, you know, what's gonna make the most sense for us, uh, going into that next year? Um, December, January, February, I think are probably the coldest months. Um, uh, so, and, and I, and I don't know if the collaboration with the Red Cross, I want to assume there is no fee with the Red Cross or maybe there might be?
I can't speak on their behalf, but traditionally, any experience that I've had with the Red Cross in a multitude of level, multitude of levels, um, most of the costs are, are absorbed by the Red Cross.
Okay, that's what I had heard. Thank you for clarifying that.
Ms. Ripley.
Were there any supplies left over from last year? You said that Walmart, uh, donated stuff, blankets and mattresses and?
Do not know the answer to that question, Ms. Ripley. That's a very good question. We can, uh, Mary is approaching the microphone. Apparently she knows, so glad you're here tonight.
Uh, yes, there was some items that were, we still have stored on the top because we weren't sure if this was gonna happen again. So, um, the blankets that were left over, anything that was left over is in a container, just boxed.
Just, on that same, you said just blankets where they're?
There's blankets. We, um, had, um, air mattresses, so they're there as well. Uh, so yes, everything is in their container. So everything's up in our storage area. So, um, again, because we didn't know what was gonna happen for this winter.
Thanks, Mary.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was just talking to Jacqueline, our clerk. So just, just for clarification. So Rod's House wasn't the one that, that actually put it together. It was three other employees who were paid by the city privately. So just to give that some clarification, um, certainly a great organization though, and just want to put that on the record. And, and something else I wanted to add with, with my county experience as our deputy city manager was alluding to. So Yakima County Human Services, um, are the ones that, that can get those vouchers out. So what I will do is I'll contact them tomorrow and see, because that pot of money sort of fluctuates. Because coming out of ARPA and, and coming out of the pandemic, I mean, they had millions of dollars to flood into the market. But I will say, when I left Franklin County, those funds were very thin for vouchers and, and for emergency services. So let me, let me give them a call and check in with them and, and see where they're at. But that is the funding source primarily, where that will come from. And, uh, just for the public's knowledge, they do have a really nice winter resources page, which Rod's House is on there. And, um, but, but primarily across the valley. You know, there's Union Gospel Mission, Camp Hope, Rod's House, Yakima Neighborhood, uh, Health Services and Wapato Noah's Ark. And then, uh, Toponish, the Yakima Nation help out with those services. But, yeah, let me, let me give the county a call and, and. But, yeah, let me let me give the county a call and and see what sort of funding they have and what mechanisms. But have a lot of experience kind of getting those vouchers out. But the vouchers can be a challenge to get out, just the mechanism to get them out is really the problem when you have someone that that has a need. That's how do they get that voucher can be the challenge. So let me let me work on some of those mechanics.
All right, thank you. And the goal for tonight was just to begin a conversation. It's not to come up with a solution or make anything that we're going to vote on. We're not making a motion on this tonight. It's just the beginning of a conversation. And it's only on this agenda. It is not on our regular meeting agenda. So. All right, so if there's no other business to come before this council, and without any objection, I adjourn this meeting at six nineteen. We will be back at six thirty for our regular meeting.